Work session for Tuesday, April twenty-four, two thousand eighteen, at seven P. M. is now called to order. A work session items include, uh, item, item A, public comments on work session related items. B is a discussion of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget and capital improvement plan. Uh, then we, after that, we will consider a closed session, uh, concerning union contract negotiations. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to, uh, item B, discussion on fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget and capital improvement plan? If not, we will move on to the discussion. We left off last week, um, headed into debt and such, I don't. I think the debt's pretty much straightforward. We could start with, uh, with payroll. I have a question on, uh, on city payroll.
What page you're on?
Page, uh, what page you're on?
Twenty-four. On, on this, it indicates the FY two thousand eighteen budget was eight hundred forty-six thousand four oh three for health. Yet, the budget from last year was eight hundred seven four oh four. And, and at that, we were at two percent under the, uh, the cap limit. Is there something that changed dramatically during the year?
I don't believe so. I'll, I can double check that number, Mayor, but, um, that's a roll up of, um, of all the health insurance, not just the Blue Cross Blue Shield. So that may be the difference.
Okay.
There's dental division in it as well.
The others aren't included in taxes and fringes?
I don't believe so, but I'll have to double check that.
Okay, um, because it just, uh, just said, it just said health. I would, you know, uh, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars was the budget last year, and it's showing at eight hundred, uh, forty-six thousand dollars here. So I was curious as to why there was a difference like that.
As I said, I believe that that reflects all of that. I will double check and make sure that there's not an issue with that.
Okay. Any other questions on that page? Uh, we have wages on the next page, page twenty-five. Any questions on the wages? It's twenty-sixth is pension. You see, our contributions are up in, in virtually every category. And we've gone, uh, down in percent funded, except for, um, division eleven. That went up slightly, but we're underfunded in all, all the pensions at this time. You don't have any update figures for that, do you?
Um, we get our next annual actuarial evaluation probably in early June, so we'll have numbers then. I do know that, um, MERS had around a fourteen percent rate of return, which is a little less than double what their estimate is. So that should help to stabilize, it may not increase, but it should help to stabilize that somewhat.
Um, the states here that were making the changes to, uh, department head non-union benefits moving towards a defined contribution. Do we have any structure to that yet?
Well, we have, we have some information out that we're gonna be presenting at a upcoming work session for council's consideration.
Okay. The healthcare. When we got the union contracts and when we looked at the different, um, amounts that were listed there, are, are those adjusted for uniformity? Uh, or, or the contract, the actual amount that, that is contributed by the employees? I mean, some of them were sub one hundred dollars, some of them were two hundred dollars. I mean, there were, there were different amounts in contribution.
I'm not trying, following your question. Could you, could you state that again?
Here, here we're showing an employee monthly here healthcare cost for a single person of a hundred and fifteen dollars. And, and for double at two sixty-five. When I look at the various, the steel workers' contract, the I A F F and, and the poem and the comb, the, they have different amounts in there. Or is it, does the contract state the correct amount, or is that fluid with?
You'd have to look at each contract. Keep in mind that our, our union contracts have, all have medical insurance reopeners. So that's adjusted every year as part of the discussion with the unions and the budget. And it doesn't always make it back in that original contract. It's just a letter of understanding, or we, you know, we inform them of what that is. So that may be what you're looking at. I'd have to look at the specific union contract, but we do have uniformity across the city. Everybody pays the same if you're a family or a single or two.
Single, family, or, or double, okay. And we're still moving towards eliminating the two hundred and fifty dollar a month per retiree, um, post benefit for everybody. It says, I'm assuming that city, city staff also.
We're not moving to eliminate that. What we're moving to do is to, um, not allow people to stay on our insurance and instead receive that two hundred and fifty in the form of a stipend to buy health insurance.
Okay, to purchase their own health insurance?
Right.
But not be able to stay on the, uh?
On the city's plan, yeah.
Okay. It moves, um, to the general fund. Could, could you explain some of the movement that went on in the general fund to, to drop the revenues as much as they were?
Absolutely. So, um, the, the primary reason, if you look at this page here, where you see the revenue dropped two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that is almost entirely due to, uh, a change in the way we treat the debt service. You can also see that the expense went down. So, we have one bond, the two thousand and ten capital improvement bond, that it is a general obligation bond, which means, um, it, at the end of the day, the city's general fund is responsible for paying that. But that particular bond funded, um, streets and water and sewer items. So, it, the general fund itself doesn't pay for that bond. We were showing that bond in the general fund because it was a general obligation bond. When we were going through the grant application with rural development, um, it, it became apparent that it would be better to show that bond being paid for out of the funds that actually pay it. So a part of it, part of it is paid by the capital improvement fund, part of it's paid by water and sewer, and part of it is paid by, um, uh, street funds. So, I believe, so we're, that's how we're showing that now, and it's no longer an in and an out in the general fund. So that overall drop is what you're seeing there. Um, I believe if you look at the, um, discussion here of the general fund, um, in the budget overview, we discussed that, and we just actually discussed it in the budget document. I gotta get to the right page here. It's discussed right here in the assumption and notes, where it talks about a decrease, but it was due, due to adjusting the way the service for the two thousand and ten capital improvement bond is accounted for. Absent this change, revenues would be up about two point three percent.
Okay, where's that paid from now?
That's on page thirty-four, Mayor.
So that was just a transfer in, transfer out, kind of?
That's how we were showing it. We were showing the three funds that pay for that bond as a transfer into the general fund, and then we were showing the bond payment coming out of the general fund. So we've eliminated both sides of that. So now the, the, the portion that's allocated each of those funds is gonna be shown there as, as a bond.
Okay.
You can see down here in the other revenue, that, that's roughly that four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar number that I just highlighted. That was roughly the, the magnitude of the bond payment for that. So that's, you can see that's why it made that big impact.
I have a question about the elections. Why is there such a big increase?
So, when the state issued its new chart of accounts for, um, adoption by all local units of government, it shows that elections need to be broken out and separated into separate funds. So we've broken that out of the clerks' department. This, your specific question, though, is why did it go up so much? If you look at here, uh, the elections. Heather can talk about this better, but the, the, basically, that is a normal fluctuation because it's a primary year, and so you have to have another election.
I wanna have some questions as we go through the different, uh, departments. As I mentioned in the last session, you know, one of the things when we, when we talk about financial reserves and stuff on, uh, on page thirty-one, and I can appreciate, you know, the, uh, the fund balances, uh, is an important aspect of, of our operation. When you get down to the, uh, fourth paragraph, right in the middle, projections indicate additional structural changes or more likely re-prioritization of spending would be needed, uh, in a few years. You know, last several budgets of talking about you, you can't, uh, can't discount the thought that personnel reductions are coming, or, or changes are coming, and stuff like that. Uh, but there, there's never any guidance or any hint of where that might occur, or, or what it might look like, uh, in the future. I think, you know, when, you know, myself financially, when I look at, okay, I've got X amount of revenue, and I have X amount of expenses, and, and this budget item went up, and that budget item went up, I look to the future and to make decisions on, on, on what I'm going to cut, or have, ask my wife which ones I can cut, you know, instead of me making the decision. But I think, I think council's generally interested in knowing and, and where we're going and what some of those things might look at, because I see the red in, in the future with the deficit, and I know our revenue's not going to, to grow at the rate we need it to grow to sustain some of the increases that we're having. So, and I would, I would ask that, you know, in, in the future, that, that staff look at some of those issues and, um, you know, present to us what, what the most likely changes will be in the future.
Well, I thi- I think it probably perhaps would be, uh, an opportunity, just have a robust discussion with council at a future date about where we see the, the revenues going, and then just talk about ideas to, to manage that. And, and that could be, that could take a lot of forms, but I think we, it would be a good work session topic to start talking along those lines.
Is there anything in this budget that addresses those future projections? The lack of revenue, having to do cuts?
Yeah, I believe there is.
Did you address some of them?
If I might elaborate a little bit. So I think what the mayor's referring to are these three-year financial projections down here at the bottom, which show, um, next year, thirty-three thousand dollar deficit, and then a hundred and twenty-seven, then a hundred and ninety-two. So, to, I guess, one thing, to put that in perspective, in year two, that's about a, that's about two percent. It'll probably lessen that because the general fund budget will grow, or maybe one and a half percent of the general fund. So, the reason that I put that line item in the manager, you know, in, in the manager keeps it in his budget, that additional headcount reductions can't be ruled out, is simple. The city isn't a factory. We don't make widgets. We employ people. That's the vast majority of our expenses. And so, if push comes to shove, if the budget really gets tighter, there's a problem, um, and we're, and our revenues aren't growing, yes, at some point in time, you might have to, you might have to consider headcount reductions. And had we needed headcount reductions in this budget to balance the budget per council's directive, which was, don't use fund balance and, and try to do more for streets, which we've done, then we would've made that recommendation, but we didn't have to do that in this budget. Is the thirty-three thousand dollar deficit that's projected in, in the next year's budget probably concerning to me? No, because there's hundreds of assumptions that are built into that, and those change. And so, as an example, we went out for health insurance this year, and we saved more money than even what we had built into this budget. So there's already some cushions there, and we've got a nine point nine percent cap for next year. So we've done that. We're looking at possibly, per council's directive, you know, changing to a D. C. plan, um, you know, and we'll have some numbers on that to present, to, to see what that impact is. My point is, every year, we look at the budget and we make adjustments, and we do that year after year after year. And there's been some years where we have had attrition, and we have had a downsized, when we had significant revenue losses after the great recession. The last several years, we haven't had to do that because we've been able to, uh, you know, adjust the budgets to make things work. And, and there's a variety of ways to do that. So, um, if headcount reduction was needed, then we would propose that. Right now, it's not needed, but we, the point is, we can't necessarily rule that out because, down the road, if, if revenues go south, or we have another recession, or, or what have you, then that may be the case that we end up having to do that. Or maybe we adjust service levels in some certain area, or whatever that case may be. That, that's why that statement is in there.
I know that you work very hard to, always looking for ways for the city to save money. I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just questioning, not questioning, I'm just wondering if there are more that we could do in this budget that would help us in the future if we did have a downturn.
Well, there's certainly, there's things you could do, but the question is, is it necessary to do at this point? And, and we can't say with any certainty, we can't look out much beyond this year to decide whether we're gonna have to make any personnel cuts, as an example. Because as Ed said, you know, next year, you know, our projections is about a thirty-four thousand dollar deficit. There's a lot of ways to cover that. You know, by proper management of this, um, proposed budget, we could, we could realize savings of that magnitude or greater, uh, this, this year. You know, there, so there's not enough certainty for staff to come and say, we need to reduce headcount, not at this time. We have a lot of, there's an, there's options. We have a, a fund balance, I think it's about almost nineteen percent. We could crank that back, uh, and use some fund reserves, or we could, um, not do as much in streets one year as another year. You know, there's options to take a look at.
The last place I would look, it would be headcount. I would be looking at departments and where we maybe could save, or put off, or, or do something different. I'm just trying to look, trying to look ahead as far as I can and be realistic, and I, I don't, I don't see anything in here, Mr. Bradford, that really jumps out at me and says, we've, we're, we're looking ahead and we're doing things. That's why I asked the question, if, because you would know, you drawing the budget up, or you guys drew the budget up, so.
We do look ahead, or we wouldn't have the three-year financial projections in here. We are looking ahead. We're looking at what the budget's telling us, but this isn't a multi-year budget in terms of you adopting it. So I'm not gonna say, because we have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar projected deficit in year two, we need to lay two people off. I mean, I, I can't say that. I'm not in a position to say that. That would be premature. But what I will say is, when we came into the budget this year, we had a sizable imbalance between revenues and expenses. And the department, when that happens, with, you know, the department head submit their budgets, I, we do the revenue estimates, and then we all sit down and we go through, and we say, okay, how do we get this, this budget into balance? And that's what we did, and, and that's what we presented to you. So we've already made adjustments to the budget. I mean, there's been some things that departments have given up. There's been reductions from what they had proposed originally. You don't necessarily see that, but those are reflected in the manager's recommendation.
Okay. My concerns are, as, as, as we look forward, and, and I'll digress a little bit, go back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. When we look at page thirty-two, we're showing inter-fund transfers of, of nineteen percent for the revenue. Let's just call it twenty percent for the sake of rounding things off. So one-fifth of, of our revenue comes from inter-fund transfers. Uh, in the description above, inter-fund transfers in the form of reimbursement to administrative fees are, are also important sources of revenue. Back in fifteen and sixteen, that was twelve percent. We've, we've increased the fees for service by, by about a quarter of a million dollars, a little more than a quarter of a million dollars since that timeframe. And if, if I'm incorrect, you can tell me, but, uh, you know, we, we're talking about Public Act fifty-one money, uh, and stuff for, uh, for street maintenance. I mean, local streets, major streets, refuse collection. In, in some instances, we've nearly tripled those.
So I can discuss each of those if you'd like. For our, for our enterprise funds, for our marina, and for our water and sewer, and for our boat launch, we charge a flat percentage rate from the general fund to those funds, a flat percentage of their revenues to reimburse the general fund for the services provided. Those are very defensible. It's very commonly done that way, and I don't have a problem, um, standing here and saying those are, those are totally acceptable. The water and sewer fund has taken up an inordinate amount of time, and will continue to do so as we deal with the sewer separation. I would argue that the amount that the water and sewer fund is sending over is probably a little bit shy of the, the actual time that's being spent. But we, we don't calculate that. We do it as a flat percentage. If you look at the refuse fund, there were items that the general fund is providing in terms of labor, with picking up leaf bags and, and doing other services, that ju- that rightfully should be paid out of the refuse fund, that weren't being reimbursed to the city, to the city's general fund. Knowingly, we did that because, again, we don't like to make large changes in any given year budget. But at the end of the day, if, if the choice is, let's subsidize the refuse fund by not reimbursing the general fund for all the services that are being provided, or let's cut services in the general fund, I think the prudent thing to do is to try to correctly bill that. And so we've been phasing that into the refuse fund, so that's why you've seen that charge for service going up. In the wa- or in the street funds, the city is allowed to, to charge up to ten percent for administration. We don't charge a dime in administration for the street funds. And we've done that very consciously because we know that councils wanna keep that money in asphalt and, and, you know, plowing and what have you. So we don't charge any administration fee. But what we are required to do is we are required to record all of the costs of maintaining the streets in the street fund. And so about four years ago, we implemented a more robust reporting thing because we didn't feel like we were capturing that accurately. And that hasn't changed the amount of money that's come back to the general fund. It, but it has reflected what is in, accurately now, in the, in the street funds. So the amount of money that comes back to the general fund, um, from that, is, there's actually a subsidy, or, or there has been a subsidy from the general fund to the street funds for quite a while because the street funds weren't getting reimbursed all the way. We've now corrected that bookkeeping and accounting, so it's actually calculating the actual amount of labor that the general fund is providing to the street funds. But it's not a net cash thing because of the way we book it. It's just, just basically an in and an out. But we have to record that in the street funds. So, I, so the answer to your question is, yes, the inter-fund transfers have gone up, but I believe they're all appropriate, and they're things that we've done, um, as a management team to, you know, help to, to stabilize the general fund budget, but they're appropriate things to do. I don't think there's any issue whatsoever with that.
Well, when, when I see about a thirty percent increase in a short period of time, um, in, in the funds being brought in from those other areas, it kind of raises a, a concern to me that that's quite a sharp increase. I would also say, if it, if it costs us that much to pick up yard waste, maybe we should look at contracting that.
It costs the city less to do that than it would to contract with, um, with allied ways. We've looked at that. But you'll see that number start to flatten out because we've eliminated some of those implicit subsidies, or are close to eliminating them and phasing those in. So that number should, it will continue to grow as revenues grow in some of the enterprise funds, but it should start to level off because we've, we've addressed some of that.
I have a question or comment. It's on, on, um, trash, rubbish. We have that one point one five mil for garbage, for waste.
Refuse.
Refuse. And we could transfer, we, we could increase that a little bit to offset the increase that we're going to be charging residents on their, on their water, sewer, and rubbish.
That's correct. The, um, the, the refuse fund, the statute says you can levy up to three mils. That's been rolled back. I don't have the exact number. It's probably like two point six, and we're only levying one point one five. So council has the prerogative without having a, to vote on it, you know, having a public vote to raise that millage rate if they wanted to. The, the refuse fund is funded by two sources, user fees and the millage. And as you know, and as we've talked about, the, the tax revenue, you know, hasn't gone up. So, the, the refuse millage was not raising as much in terms of the percentage of total revenues as it used to. And in order to continue to pay for the cost of the contracts and the other services that are provided, we've had to raise the rates on the residents. So if you look back several years, you'd see that the, the, the split between the refuse and the, between the taxes and the charge for services was a little bit different than it is right now. Let me go to the refuse fund real quick. If you look at this pie chart here, uh, taxes used to be a much larger percentage. You know, it was more than fifty percent, and as the, as the tax base has kind of gone down, and the costs have gone up, they have raised these user fees more and more. So council has a choice on how they wanna fund, fund the refuse. They can, they can increase the, the user fees, like has been proposed in the budget, or they could offset some or all of the millage increases, and that's council's prerogative.
I think there might be some benefit to, I know we're just switching it over, but I think people are gonna see an increase in their water and sewer rates anyway this year, right?
Correct, three and a half percent.
So, a- and then an increase in, in, um, refuge. I think it would be more prudent to put that into the millage, increase that, but I don't know how everybody else on council feels and how much money that actually amounts to. I forgot. I think it was thirty thousand or something.
Depends on whether you feel the, the refuse should be paid for based on your property value, or, or based on your usage.
It already is, most of it, at one point one five.
But.
The, the one thing, you know, we have to look at, even talking about water and sewer rates, and they are gonna increase, and we have to maintain, uh, a sufficient level to satisfy USDA, uh, for the loans that we're looking for. That's one of the things that they're interested in, is making sure that, that we have sufficient funds coming in to support the repayment of the loans as well as to have operating and maintenance, uh, reserves.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I must've missed your point in, in that as far as.
Well, if you're talking about the, the, raising the rubbish and how that impacts water and sewer.
Does an impact, but.
I know, it's, it's, but it does. It's on the same bill, and that's how people are going to look at it. So that's why I'm suggesting perhaps we might think about putting it on the tax bill.
This is what we had built into the budget in terms of the rate increases. It seems like a large percentage, and it is, it's fourteen and a half percent. But for a person who's got a tidy toad, it's, it's two dollars a month, so it's about twenty-four dollars a year extra. So, it's, again, it's entirely up to council. If they want us to look at what that, uh, refuse millage rate would have to be, we can do that. I can, you know, I can give you back of the envelope calculation. I think it's gonna be probably around a quarter mil increase, ballpark, but I'd have to double check that if we did that.
For people on fixed incomes, in, in, you know, um, it's a hardship every time we do raise the rates on this particular bill. And, and I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it easier.
Am I missing something? If you put it on my taxes, I'm, I'm still paying it, right? And whether I pay it on my bill or pay it on my taxes?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be on the tax bill instead of the water bill.
If you itemize, it's deductible.
I sometime, I don't sometimes, I, I think about those people who invest a lot of money in our community that really don't live here, but about four months out of the year, who would, in a lot of cases, be paying a lot of that fee.
And I don't have a dog in this fight, and I don't have a recommendation for council. This is a pure policy decision. This issue, um, as some of you may recall, when Councilmember Yonkman was on council probably six, seven years ago, was, he was very passionate about this issue, and there was a lot of time and discussion spent on that. He, he felt that refuse service was a, was a pure user fee, and that there should be no millage, where there were some other council members that thought it was a, a service and should be funded all by millage, and the end result was that you maintain that split. The issue that we've had, and the reason we've had to raise rates, is because the refuse millage isn't bringing in enough money because the, the tax base hasn't been growing, and that's, that's the purest, simplest explanation. But whether, whether you increase, whether you raise the money that's necessary to, to forestall this, you know, declining fund balance, as you can see on the chart to the left, through a millage increase or a rate increase is, is a policy decision for council to make. We've, we've done it as a, as a, a rate increase because that's been what, what councils have wanted to see. They haven't wanted to raise the millage, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be done now.
Well, the millage doesn't really have anything to do with consumption.
You're correct.
I mean, it's a base, I mean, it's a base, but, then, I mean, um, you know, a, a fifty thousand dollar taxable house could, uh, could, could have sick bags of garbage a week, and, and a million dollar house could, uh, could have two. So, uh, the millage is going to impact, of course, the million dollar house much greater than the fifty thousand dollar house, uh, even, even though they're using less of the service. But, you know, a lot of, a lot of people from. But, you know, a lot of, a lot of people from times past were used to, to paying property taxes and millages for services uh, that didn't have fees, and now, and now we have fees, uh, for these. We have had them for quite a period of time. When we look at water and sewer, that's sort of a unique plan. When we did the Burton and Associate Rate Study, there was a programmed series of rate increases over a period of time up, up to the, we're in the last year of that now, I believe, or, or the next last year.
The three and a half percent's indefinite.
Okay. So a lot of communities that I've studied, um, have a rate of inflation or, or three percent ordinance that raises the, uh, water and sewer rate on an annual basis because there's inflation, uh, in maintaining the system and personnel costs, and there's also a desire to, to build revenue for depreciation of the system, uh, so you're not always borrowing money or bonding. That they're on the same bill, um, certainly makes it, looks like they're tied together, but, but they're really not.
It's one check. It's, it's, it's a bill that, that people on fixed incomes have to deal with. Um, it may not be much, but every time that increases, you, you hear from them. Probably more likely to hear from them than the higher end. Uh, so it's just a thought. I think it's worth thinking about.
We're not doing this bring pickup anymore, correct?
How long, how long has it been since we had a, uh, increase in the refuse rate?
They've increased every year for the last several years.
Similar amount?
Um, it was, I believe, double digits last year and probably high single digits the year before. I can get you that information for sure. But, and, and again, it's because the, the bulk of the expense in the refuse fund is the contract with allied ways, and it's got an escalator on it. So you've got to cover those costs, and if the, if the millage isn't generating more revenue or is flat, then the raise hasn't become a flat.
And we've drawn down a substantial surplus in the, uh, in the refuse.
We have, and that was planned too. So that's part of what's leading into here. Um, there was more money in this fund than was needed. So we, we didn't raise rates as much as they might otherwise need to be as we were drawing that down. Now that it's been drawn down, we have to preserve a reasonable fund balance and make sure we can cover our costs.
Property taxes, we've had an increase, uh, the last two years, small.
Yeah, so the, the taxable value increased by about one point one percent. The net realizable revenue to the city is about point four three percent.
I had to look around for some things in revenue, some things that had changed around. Uh, for, for example, when we get, um, just for the sake of it, I want to start at the, at the bottom of thirty-six. We have utility ownership fee that used to be under a utility, uh, and services fee, and it also included payment in lieu of taxes, uh, but I don't find, looking for the, uh, payment.
Paying in lieu of taxes.
It's up at the top, it's up at the top in revenues. Those used to be together in a distinct category.
Right, so we did make some adjustments when we went to B S and A to try to group things a little bit more, I think, coherently. If council would like to see that returned to the other way, we can do that, but both those line items are still in here. They're just grouped a little differently.
It's, it's hard to, hard for me to compare year to year when everything's changing all the time, so.
We try to make it as consistent as we can, but there's sometimes that, changes are either mandated through the state charter of accounts or through something that we thought actually added and enhanced things moving forward.
Where, we get reimbursed for the, uh, people for the bridge now. Um, where, where does that come in as revenue?
Okay, so the revenue itself that we get goes into the street funds because we have to, it's included as part of our, um, distribution from the state of Michigan for the Act fifty-one, so it goes back into the street funds. At the end of the day, if you look at the revenue here for these charge for services for major and local streets.
Mm-hmm.
They show up in there.
In the charge for service? So the, the reimbursement comes. And that was supposed to cover those two positions, right, that we added as full-time?
It covers one of the positions as we, as we went over in a lot of detail in last year's budget. Because we're only working on the bridge for half a year. But we, we made some other reductions, as you recall, and changed some things around, so the net was a, what, a half F T E?
One and a half F, full-time quit lots. And reimburses three employees for six months each.
We hired two more people to do that, and we get reimbursed for one and a half.
Because that was supposed to be a, a net zero cost to the, uh, to the city, right?
It's actually a net savings to the city to hire those two employees and do the reverse reimbursement through, um, that.
Do you have any questions on those rental incomes or sales? Chief Kozel, if you could, uh, fines and forfeitures. Two thousand fourteen, city council maxed out the millage, uh, added another point four six mils and, and hired an additional police officer to bring us up to thirteen sworn officers because of a, a lack of road patrol. And that was one of the things cited back in the thirteen fourteen, um, budget era that the fines and forfeitures and road patrol was down, but then we hired an officer and it declined even less as far as fines and forfeitures. Is there a particular reason for that?
Well, I can tell you that forfeitures, the word forfeitures pretty much has gone away now. Uh, the government legislation has really, um, taken a microscope on that as far as what forfeitures are and how that will be done. There's actually legislation right now where if passed, if it hasn't already been passed, that you actually have to have a conviction first before you can do any type of forfeiture, or before we could forfeit, have the proceedings, you know, put in circuit court and then go through that. Our forfeitures that we've had, cash, you know, property and everything, it's just plummeted because of that, because of the strict rules. So that's probably an account for that, why that has decreased so much.
It accounts for a part of it, but honestly, the, the biggest change in my view is, is that we don't have Judge Danielson as a district court judge anymore. He used to be much more aggressive on levying fines than the current district court judge.
Those were, those were all shared revenues. I, I guess the, the thing I'd look at is I, I can go back five, six, seven years. Uh, there were, there were a thousand traffic tickets written, uh, last year. What, we had two hundred and forty-four. Um, and, and that has continued to diminish. And, and I'm not for writing tickets to drive revenue, uh, but I, I can attest, I don't think people are driving any better today than they did five or six years ago.
Well, I think across the board, you start looking at the, uh, um, things that are done with law enforcement as far as safety belt enforcement, all these specific events. You can see that the amount of accidents that are taking place, the injuries that are taking place have gone, have steadily decreased because people are wearing their safety belts, they are monitoring, they are do, um, traveling at a safe speed. Um, that's why if we were to go for one of those grants to do those old, um, type of special events and get that extra money, we wouldn't qualify because we don't have those type of accidents that are occurring in our area because of those prior, I believe, events. So as far as our T L E, my expectation with the officers is to be out there and, and doing T L E, I can, traffic law enforcement. I can tell you though, that especially in the last year, and showing the numbers that I did a couple of months or a couple of weeks ago, that our felony investigations has gone up drastically, and that our involvement in those, of course, takes our, our officers away from being on the street to conduct that traffic.
Thank you. I was just wondering if it's ever going to come back up or if it's, it's always going to stay at a lower level.
I can tell you even.
Being in the sixty, seventy thousand, thousand dollar range, and now it's in the twenties, so.
The biggest thing is, especially with what we have for our department and what our direction is that we want to, um, take. We try to, um, put our time into a lot of different areas. One thing that we really want to try to address is our blade issues, which takes a considerable amount of time. Takes you away from being where you need to be, maybe to do some speed enforcement. Just, uh, yesterday, we, we tagged twenty cars in the city. So we're trying to do the things that keep our city the way it needs to be, which may take us away from doing the, um, T L E. So we have to make sure that we try to do all of it, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward in that direction.
Thank you.
I have a question about Scent.
Yes.
Seems to be a lot of counties and city police departments that are going away from that. And I, I can refer to where I used to work. They had to go away because they didn't have the manpower, they didn't have the money to continue it. How are we with staff and our Scent Officer? Would, is he serving a purpose for us, or would he be better off doing patrol and helping with the, the guys with patrol?
I think you got to look at that, um, in probably two or three different ways. Myself, having spent seven and a half years in a drug unit, I benefited tremendously. You know, that helped me out throughout personally through my career and also the department. Chief Bachman spent years as a, a drug officer. Josh Glass, he's at where he's at today because of his years in, in drug enforcement. That right there helps us as a department when they come back to the department, be able to hit the ground running, number one. Number two, when we have specific incidents, like recently when we had the, uh, gentleman that was breaking into houses, I was able to give them a call. We had their entire unit here in town immediately to help us, to subsidize us, to be able to get the job done. They also help us with typing search warrants, because we just want the staffing. When you have two people on, you don't have the staffing to be able to hit the doors and do the search warrants. In the last three, four months, the amount of work that they've been able to help us with, take over drug cases for us, has been exponential, and I think it's very well worth us, worth it having our officer in that.
So could you elaborate a, a little bit? You said when they come, they get training is what I think I hear you saying. Can you tell me a little bit, Walt, what, what that training is?
One of the biggest parts is, is that you're continually daily working with the Fourth Amendment, so you learn a lot about your search and seizure more than you do as a normal road officer. When you come back, you're able to hit the ground running, um, doing the investigations, interviewing. Your interview techniques are, are, you know, is higher than a normal road patrol. You can write search warrants at the drop of a hat. You're just, you're ahead of the curve in those areas because of not only the training that you're going through, because they go through a ton of training, but the amount of cases that you're involved in. You're with a good group of, uh, men and women, learning from them, listening to them interview. It winds up being, um, a big benefit for not only that officer, but for the department when they come back.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Expenses by major areas are broken out, uh, pretty thoroughly. Legislative, I lack legislative. Legislative's a decline for the, uh, you know, go back, the, uh, legislative budget, um, at, at forty thousand dollars is, uh, is actually less than it was, uh, eight or nine years ago.
Thank you.
The projected pay raises for the last four years are supplies, are down, are travel and training. Uh, I do have a question. M M L dues. Why, why are all the M M L dues assessed against legislative department?
One is for continuity because it's been done that way even before I started. Um, it's got to go to the general fund somewhere. The M M L is the, kind of the parent organization. It's made up of elected officials and communities, so that's probably the most appropriate place to charge that.
Because I know when we bought the B S and A software, we distributed the cost of that across different departments and such, so.
Yes, we did, because it's, it's fun, it, it's for the operations of the whole setting.
I had asked earlier in the year about, uh, replacement computers for city council. Uh, there's no money in the budget for that next year?
No, um, for a couple of reasons. I discussed the, the, um, thought about actually moving to a P C based platform for council. Our I T person and at I T Wright recommended against that primarily because, um, one, they're a lot more effort to maintain, a lot more difficult. They're much more susceptible to viruses. Um, we did establish a council work area here with a P C if, if council members want to come in and do analysis. Um, the iPads that you have will need to be replaced at some point, but they're still functional because they're primarily used for doing email and viewing. And if people are having difficulties with those, I'm more than happy to sit down and, and give another primer or reminder on how those work. But, um, we didn't feel like the budget could afford, um, to replace those this year. Maybe in a future year they could be. And, um, it didn't seem prudent to go to a, a council P C platform because of the problems that are inherent with that.
Well, and there was an issue with, uh, with getting copies printed. People liking copies printed when you've got large spreadsheets with small numbers on them, uh, and, and several hundred pages of council agenda to go through. I'm not going to claim special privileges, but I do have difficulty reading those things and get very fatigued, um, with, uh, with my vision issues.
And I can show you how to zoom in on the iPad. It certainly.
Scrolling it all over the place, that's not convenient. You know, I've got a fourteen inch P C that I'll look at, you know, for, for a lot of that stuff. But, but I really want to keep city business off my P C, um, because I have private things on there that I don't want to be discoverable uh, in, in other realms, you know, um. I've been through that before with the, with, with the military. You don't, you don't use your personal assets for government business because everything on that, then in a Freedom and Information Act request, uh, or investigation would be discoverable, so. I'll just, just, you know, bring it up. The, yeah, the iPad, you can read and get email, um, but you know, you, you can't cut and paste. You, you can't, uh, put documents together, um, from Adobe and, and, and do other things. I mean, it's, it's not much of a tool other than for email, so.
I think, and as Ed said, that's one of the reasons we set up this area back here for council to use and as they see fit and they need. And I would advise, um, you might want to talk to George. If you've got worries about, you know, can I use my personal P C to have city council stuff or access email through it? I, I think you might find that there's not as much risk there as you think, um, because if somebody's going to FO you something, I mean, that information is here. And if it's, if something is discoverable because of a court, court lawsuit, it has to be directly related to that. But George could have hine on that better. Um, you know, the rea- the, the whole thought process behind the iPads was to save money. You know, council member Zalinski talked about other things we can do to save money. We've saved a lot of money in paper and copying costs and wear and tear on the copiers by having these iPads. And if, if we need more training on them, I'm more than happy to do that. It's probably time for all of those to come back in and get, um, cleaned up and updated to the extent that they have and at some point. If there is a desire though for council to change to a P C platform, and that's what council wants to do, we can work that into, into next year's budget probably in the capital improvement fund. It, you know, it'd be a thousand dollars apiece probably for something, give or take, maybe seven hundred, whatever, whatever it is, depending on the platform.
You know, I, I find it interesting that I talk with Denise in, uh, in planning and zoning, and she tells me about all the labor she goes through in printing all the packages for the people on the planning and zoning board and on the historical district. And, uh, and, and I know those are awful big packages of material too. But no thought been given to, to putting them on an iPad or, or, or some electronic media to.
Certainly look at doing that. We could certainly consider that in future budgets if that's something that council wanted to endorse.
Well, I understand the, the need to conserve and we, when you ask for a budget that's two hundred pages long, it does take a lot of paper to print that out. Heather's been really good about doing that. Well, what I find myself doing now is I go, I go on my personal computer, and I can print off that. I just bring it up off the website, and I print what I want off of that on my personal computer. Because it is a lot easier to look at it in print than it is on that computer. I, um, I guess I'm getting old and slow. It's just a lot easier to digest.
There's no doubt that there's, there's some things that's easier to look at on paper. I mean, it just depends on, a lot of it depends on how people, you know, link the work to, so.
Most of it, most of it is the, uh, is the financial stuff and where you get into detailed things where you might want to highlight something, you want to make some notes. I like, I like to cut and paste and, and make myself kind of a prompt list, uh, for council meetings. The, um, certainly can't do that here, but like Mayor Protem says, I, I can, I can get those things on Dropbox on my personal computer and print the pages I'm interested in, manipulate them that way, uh, on, on my own system.
From my perspective, everything that's on here, the public can see on their home computer except for the emails, and that's basically what I use it for, is just emails. I, I go to my personal. I, I go to my personal computer, if there's something I wanna print, I just print it off on my com, on my own printer. And that's pretty good, because I just learned how to turn it on about three weeks ago. I'm getting there.
There's a, uh, any question, any, anything else on legislative? Manager's budget. Who, who is budgeted, and if a manager gets a, uh, vehicle allowance, who is budgeted for the City Hall vehicle?
Say that again?
Who pays, who pays for the City Hall vehicle? There's a, a general vehicle at City Hall, is there not?
There is, and that's paid for out of the motor pool. That's paid for out of the motor pool, that, the last time we bought that was. There's not a specific department that pays for that, it's available citywide to water and sewer personnel, uh, DPW personnel. Maintenance is paid for, DPW just correct on that.
Finance. Let me ask for some clarification, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but when we were going to the appointment of, uh, of Heather as City Clerk and realignment of, of departments, I was of the opinion that between finance and the clerk department, we were going to have an overall decline, at this point in time, and then the out years with relative with, uh, salary growth and step increases show, uh, an increase. But yet, between those two departments and elections which were pulled out of, uh, of the clerk department, we, we actually do have an increase, um, department-wide for that this year.
Just to clarify, we always knew that there was gonna be an increase, a step increases were factored in, but in, in year one, if you look at what the wages were, and year one is not this budget, year one is the year of hire, and I can go back and pull up those numbers and show you, um, you know, when you have, when you factor in Michelle, what Michelle was making, to what Heather's gonna be making, and when you factor in what our new employee's making, you know, it's, it's basically a wash, maybe even a little bit of savings, and then as step increases go on over time. One thing that you might notice in the general fund, um, if you look here, you know, it shows the finance department has a twenty percent increase, but you have to keep in mind the clerks department has a sixteen percent decrease, and the reason is, is because personnel got shuffled mid-year. And a lot of that has to do with the health insurance, and I've got a report that can show you what those two combined are, the, the increase in both the clerk and the finance combined is very comparable, um, to what the other departments have. One of the questions I have for council is now that we've completed the transition to administrative service, would council like to see those two departments being separate in the budget and future budgets? Or would you like to see them combined? Um, and that's, that's a question, it's more of presentation than anything, but, um, they, they do work closely together, Heather does clerk stuff and she does financial stuff. Angie, um, mainly does financial stuff, but she also works at the counter and answers questions, Laura, who does payroll, is the deputy clerk. Kelly also is getting certified in clerk things, so the two, the department itself functions as one, we just happen to have two budgets. And that's not a decision we have to make today, but it might be something that we wanna do moving forward, is to combine those, uh, might be a little bit easier moving forward to kinda clarify that, but that, that's, um, you know, it's more of presentation than anything.
When, when we add the elections back into the clerk, we don't have a sixteen percent discount, I mean, and, I mean, you have to look at those two together.
Well, you don't, because I've pulled.
I mean, you separated them this year, but last year, the total included elections also.
But I've adjusted to take the elections out when you're looking at these comparison percentages, so the elections doesn't skew that one way or another. That sixteen percent reduction isn't as, isn't a result of pulling the, pulling the, um, elections out, because I've taken it out of the comparison column.
I'm up to fifty-four, City Hall building. Uh, increase in vehicle allowance?
Yes, um. So, Mark Hanson, who's our facility manager, um, recently, um, bought a new vehicle, and primarily, the primary purpose is just to store his tools, that he uses here on the City Hall job, he uses all of his own tools. That allowance is designed to compensate him not only for, um, the use of his personal vehicle for driving around between facilities, which he's doing every day constantly, plus also it's designed to help, um, pay for the wear and tear on his tools, and so we thought, you know, a small increase in that was warranted in this budget.
Okay, and one of the things I've noticed as I go through, and, and again, I've, I've brought up the issue that we, we don't have a, a difference column in, in some of these, uh, in, individual pages and a percent increase, but I noticed, um, the pay increase for the years like, uh, four point nine six percent, and then projected about four point nine nine the next year, and five percent the next year, and then dropping down to one point nine nine. But as I look at, at, at these and go through and, and do the math on last year and this year, I see quite a variation, I see some seven percent, some at two percent. Is, is there a reason for all these variations?
Absolutely, let me, um, let me see if I can explain that to you. If you look at this table right here, one thing to keep in mind is each employee group, um, has a different wage table. And the difference between the steps in that wage table are not consistent between the groups, but overall, the wage table establishes what they're paid based on when they come in. So, for instance, um, in the, in the fire service, they start at a relatively low salary, and there's a fairly big jump in the first couple of years between those pay steps, so you have that step increase plus whatever the inflationary adjustment is. In the non-union group, those steps, uh, are a little bit more uniform, so that, that's part of the difference that you're do, that you're seeing that. The other difference is, is if you look at this column here, which is number of employees receiving steps, um, e- every union group, depending on what turnover they've had for the year and how old their employees are and how long they've been here, have different people that are receiving or not receiving step increases. So, I'll use myself as an example, this is my last year, this upcoming budget of getting a step increase. After that, absent some kind of a classification change, I will just be getting an inflationary increase. We have some employees that are just starting out, take Heather for example, she's now the new clerk, she started down at a lower level, she's gonna have a series of step increases in front of her. So, there's a lot of those variables that are figured in there, um, you know, but, but overall, if you look at what the wages are, a, a four point seven percent increase when you have about a two percent inflation rate, means that an air, a typical across all employees step increase is only about two point seven percent. That's what that number is trying to show, so that's why you see the variation. Does that make it clear, or need further explanation?
It's a four point seven overall, I, I, I know what inflation is, and that diminishes the value of that, but it total four point seven percent increase. I mean, total a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, but inflation doesn't change that, so.
Well, that includes inflation.
Okay. Planning and zoning, fifty-seven, that was a big, big increase. Seven and a half percent, was that a step increase also? I don't know, we just moved that to department head position and reclassified it.
Yes, I mean, that's gonna be the, the biggest piece of that, it moved into a different wage scale, and then, and then now she's moving up whatever step she is in that particular wage scale, so you have a step plus the, the inflation.
Does our zoning, I see there's a vehicle allowance allowed, does our zoning person make a lot of, they use their personal car, do they use our car?
Yeah, Denise uses her own vehicle for all around-town travel, because there's just, she can't absolutely rely on the City Hall car being available, because that's used primarily for out-of-town travel. So, she's delivering packets and making, you know, going someplace to get copies, or this and that, you know, quite a bit around town.
Okay, so, do, do we pay it on a, a mileage basis, or do we pay it just to stifle every?
Stifling, yeah.
Have we ever compared the, the two?
No, because the administrative paperwork required in the mileage would, would add up to quite a bit, we've always done it just as a flat stipend, it seemed to be a reasonable amount.
And also keep in mind that, that covers any travel within the county for work-related endeavors, not just the city.
Oh, I just, I, you know, it just kinda sticks out, because it went up quite a bit, so.
Right. It didn't go up in this budget, it, it went up in a prior year budget, but it's been flat.
Yeah.
Okay, takes us up to police department. Chief, can you, can you talk a little bit about overtime, please?
Certainly. Overtime's paid at a one point five rate.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, and you'll.
Are we good?
I'm talking about the overall numbers. Your time is coming, Joe.
Overtime's very unpredictable. I can say even at, uh, for this current year budget, we're already surpassed the projections for this current year, so. We tried to project out a little bit more for the upcoming budget year, um, but this is very unpredictable, especially with our, our injuries, with last year's, uh, you know, situation with Officer Venceko, this, this tabac fell in, has been the biggest, uh, issue is that. We also have, uh, court that we're paying overtime for, training, you know, for sending officers to training. Uh, we try to minimize that on the training aspect, to try to do time for time, or we'll give them a day off, so then they can have the training on this date, so we've really been, uh, working vigorously on that, but. My biggest, uh, thing that I've committed to the officer group is to have two officers on duty, um, so I, we have to fill that second officer if we have a sick call, so.
How many part-time officers do we have?
Zero.
And do we have any plans to acquire some?
I can tell you the amount of officers, and I can even say firefighters, are the ratio of probably, um, one for every one and a half jobs right now in the state. So, to try to get a young person that's just coming out of college to try to do a part-time job, isn't like it was five to eight years ago. They're being scooped up, all officers are being scooped up for full-time positions.
That certainly takes flexibility away.
It certainly does, it's, it certainly does.
Are twelve-hour shifts harder to cover than eight?
No. We'd probably have to go up from a twelve-man, uh, shift, um, to probably a twelve-man group, to probably a fifteen-man group, just to cover on eights.
Travel and training, how much training do we do every year?
Well, that's, you know, we, I, I've seen you're listening a lot, and we talk about, uh, sustainability, one of the things that I've embarked on since I've, uh, taken over the helm here is to try to get in-house, um, officers that are instructor-based. I've also branched out to the county and the tribe to try to get a consortium that we can also do that within our own group. So, what we're doing now is we're trying to send our officers off to be instructors in all the different areas, so we can hopefully in the future not have to spend the additional money to send them just to train. So, you know, our traveling training's going up just a little bit, I, I've asked to go up even further for the next budget year, but the plan is, is to get, um, a good core group within our own department, within the county and within the tribe, so we can do all our training within the county, especially with the, um, the college opening up that training facility here within the, the next eight months, so hopefully we can take advantage of that.
Motor pool. I probably heard me talking about the motor pool and, and your department contribution.
Yes.
The, uh, I don't wanna say it in a negative sense, I mean, if, if, if you have a general fund and you have resources, the, uh, the police department has certainly paid more for vehicles in the past than, uh, than it does present. And there's been changes in philosophy and, and direction in the motor pool. But initially, there were a lot of cash purchases, uh, and, and lease purchase options that, uh, and, and very little financing of, of items coming out of there. I would certainly like to see all the departments move towards a more realistic measure, when, when I look at the police department, or I look at the fire and EMS, or if I look at public works or parks, I'd like to get a sense that I'm looking at the true cost of the department, um, and when, when we're paying about half of what it costs to maintain vehicles in a department, out of the department funds, that you're kinda missing, you know, some of that picture. The, um, but that, that's a, a broader issue, uh, to work towards, it's, uh.
Well, I think you bring up a very valid point, and today, actually, Ed and I sat down and talked to motor pool to try to project out, if you remember last year, I came to the council to talk about the plan that we were putting in place to purchase vehicles, so that we were to have some cost savings there. We started that out, I think it was last August with our first, um, council approved the next one, I think it was December, um, that vehicle's just a hair away from being back in service or being up here and ready to go, it's, it's been completed. We're actually further out than what I predicted, which I think is a good thing. However, the hiccup with our car being broadsided, you know, one of our new cars being broadsided, throws a wrench in things. I'd like to try to always keep our fleet at a certain amount of four cars, you know, we have three people on duty and you wanna have that extra car when you have these type of incidents, so we have enough cars to be able to, um, have these officers get around, so. We're trying to put a plan in place, I think with the offset with our insurance monies coming in, we'll have a little bit of savings on this third car, and we've actually talked today of trying to push out the next vehicle into the latter portion of this budget year. I'll try to stretch it out as far as I can, and I know that in our discussions and in our work group, we're probably gonna discuss about how much more money that we're probably gonna have to wind up putting into motor pool to try to help the sustainability of that.
I guess, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I just, I pass Ed to go through an exercise of, uh, just trying to determine what the true cost would be and how that would impact the general fund, and that's something that, again, that we'll have to have a discussion with council on, just so you get a sense of what does it mean if each department, uh, is paying to have a self-sustaining motor pool? What would that look like and what would be the ramifications on the general fund, so that, that will be something forthcoming.
And if I might make a couple of points, one of them was gonna be what Thad just mentioned, there's some very good literature out there that, that talks about, you know, different ways to do that, so that's gonna be something we'll work on and we'll present at a, at a future work session. This is a presentation that we did, um, two years ago in July, July of twenty sixteen, that shows the motor pool cash reserves, um, basically from inception. The reason I bring this up is I wanted to, you know, show that in the early years, you know, it was actually over the five hundred and fifty-one thousand, but that was drawn down pretty rapidly in the first four years, because of the condition of the fleet, is my understanding, and then it slowly built back up, and then it dropped down, and then it's built back up, and projections are it's gonna drop back down, so we're gonna have to, you know, make it go back up. So, the point in this slide is that there's never been an equal inflow and outflow in the motor pool, because it was never designed to do that as the, as. We will calculate approximately what it would take to do that, it's gonna be considerable, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional resources that you'd need to. Do that, but we'll calculate that number. And the other thing to keep in mind is, you know, it's not an inexhaustible resource, and, and, uh, at some point, you know, the department heads that manage the fleet have to extend the life of them, reduce fleet size, change the mix of the vehicles in the fleet, and which we have done over time, and will continue to do to make sure that that motor pool, you know, will sustain, but those are the adjustments that are made every year as part of the budgeting process.
But I certain, I certainly wouldn't have an expectation that we're overnight gonna jump from thirty thousand dollars to sixty-five thousand dollars, because that, that may be what the cost is to, to a, a particular department, but we can, over a period of time, work in that direction to, uh, you know, kinda have a timeline where we'd like to get there, um, and minimize the impact year to year. But, uh, I mean, it just seems reasonable that departments' expenses would. expenses would, would be reflected in, in that given department.
Yeah, and I think, I think if you did a gradual phase-in approach as revenues allow in the general fund, you can certainly do that. I mean, as an example, in a few years when the city hall bond expires, you've got quite a bit of extra cash there that you could allocate towards different priorities. If it's still a council priority at that time to fully fund the motor pool or get closer to that, you could take some of that excess money and do that, you could put some of it towards streets, you could put some of it towards some capital projects which have been, you know, deferred, so there's a number of things that you can do and, and you look at that every year as you move forward and, and make those decisions.
Right, questions on police department? Uh, fire and EMS. Question?
I had a question on the holiday vacation sick callback, why is that more?
Well, we, we anticipate a couple of retirements next year. One pretty much set in stone and there's another one shortly thereafter. The, when those come at the beginning of the year, they wind up in a pretty large bank of those and we're trying to anticipate that and budgeting for that so we aren't having to take that money elsewhere from my budget for that, so we're just anticipating those retirements, that's why that jumped.
The EMS, the transport, do we ever get some numbers on, on what the soft billing for residents really total and what impact that's going to have?
I do not have that data with me, Heath probably does have that, but I do not have that data with me.
It's somewhere it's going to be, if, if council decides to go to the soft billing, it's probably going to be somewhere's about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year in, in less revenue roughly.
I thought council was, was pretty, pretty set on eliminating the soft billing.
That was a consensus reached at a work session, so what we're going to do, and I've asked Director Coleso to do this, is bring, bring it back on a council agenda so you can take affirmative action on it.
How, I understood at the last work session that even with the twenty-eight thousand that people were soft billed and paid, that if they waited for two billing cycles, they wouldn't have to pay, that you were still in the black.
I believe so, yes, looking at our data, yes.
Questions? Fire and EMS. No, he's not here. Do, do you know what a hydrant rental is?
I think Ed can speak to a hydrant rental.
The charter mandated fee. It's a charter mandated fee that has to be paid.
Thank you.
Did, this, this is probably explained and for some reason I can't remember, wages, OT, FF, PA, six oh four, what?
So, one of the things that we wanted to do with the new system and firefighters aren't like a normal employee who gets overtime, statutory overtime over forty-four or over forty hours in a week. Firefighters work a certain number of hours in a twenty-eight day period and typically it's a hundred and sixty-eight or a hundred and seventy-one. Depending on how their shifts fall, they get a certain number of basically overtime hours that are built into that schedule and some days, sometimes it's four hours and sometimes I think it's sixteen is the number. And so we broke out, when we, when we pay overtime for those amounts, we just broke that out into another line item, so it's clear that that's, that's not something that they're working that's really out of our control, it's just built into the way the schedule is. And that's not unusual for us, that's across the country that they have that, depending on what schedules they're working.
What's the capital overlay and what's in that?
Capital outlay?
Or yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Page sixty-five.
I had to budget in, and this goes right back to your prior question about why we have more holiday sick is that we're going to be anticipating the hiring of two more firefighters, which is going to be an extra four to five thousand dollars in turnout gear, so that's why that's gone as an uptick in capital outlay.
Actually, you've got that penciled out sixty-six hundred, so it's...
Yeah. It's a big increase that we had to pencil in because that's a purchase that we have to do to outfit our firefighters.
Would that be something you could do through revenue sharing?
Well, I'd like to say yes, I mean, as, as you well know, that was just talked about within the revenue sharing right now, but we're going to be outside that window. We may try to reserve two with the, the group, you know, the firefighter association, then we wouldn't have to, you know, utilize that, but I have to earmark it, I have to put it there just in case.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah.
But with the second round coming up and, and knowing that you got to do that...
Oh, very possibly, yeah. You know, we have priorities in both divisions that we'd like to try to do in revenue sharing, you know, we have other equipment that we have to look at, so it's just one of those prioritized, yeah.
Um, we're, we're not up to the capital improvement program, but you, you have an expense in capital improvement for the police for firearms.
Yes.
You, you are going to apply for a grant for those firearms?
Revenue sharing grant?
I, I understood you were going to do that.
No, I, I think I talked at the same time, if, if I remember correctly, that we have other things that we need to purchase like tasers that I was going to wind up doing before and that's why I, in discussions with Ed that I'd ask, because it's something that we can put as, as an expense within this budget, so that's why we put it in there.
Mayor, one way to address your concern that, um, the, the firearms and, and items like that, which we have bought out of that fund before, but I understand your concern that it doesn't really feel like a capital outlay. I mean, it's easy enough to move those back into the general fund and then we, we can reduce ten thousand out of the general fund right now that's going to streets and just put that in the capital improvement fund, so basically just swap those two. That, you know, maybe that's more in, in spirit of, of what the capital improvement fund should be for, it doesn't change the net funding equation in the day, but it just swaps where they're being paid out of. That's an easy enough change to make if that's something that council would like to see.
I'd like to see that changed. I'd like to see it swapped and come out of the department. I don't have any problem with the expense, I just, I just have an issue with the way it's being funneled through. Your capital improvement to me is, is, has a much different use than that, so.
Well, I mean, that's certainly something we can do and then it, um, it has no net impact all the way around, it's just where they're coming out of.
Anyone have any objections to doing that?
I don't have any objections to it. I have a question about guns.
Yes.
Do you, do you get, do you get quotes, do you buy them through Michigan deals?
Uh, it will be done through my deal. The state police did a very robust vigorous look at weapons and they fired hundreds of thousands of rounds through multiple weapon systems. They've switched from the SIG forty to the Glock nine and we're going to mirror that, so, um, through the my deal, of course, because MSP has led the way in this, we're going to be able to piggyback on that and we've already looked at the prices, we've already looked at a buyback program for our officers to help offset the actual amount, so.
Are the, the old ones?
Our trade-in or buyback.
You, you saw the old ones or do you...
It's, it's like a trade-in with FFL or our officers can actually buy them and then that money helps offset the cost of the guns. But it will be a my deal price.
Yeah, ammunition, we buy ammunition there too?
Correct.
So we can make that adjustment in the budget?
I will.
Thank you. Let me ask one more question about fire department, the sixty-two thousand dollars, is that for ambulance, is that for medic one and medic five only? Does it include any expenses for pickup truck or...
Oh, we raised the motor pool up quite a bit when we bought medic five, y- y- you know, in an acknowledgement of the fact that we were adding to their fleet. The motor pool is not designed to pay for the aerial ladder, that's clear in...
I understand the ladder trucks.
And also the motor pool wasn't designed to pay for a pumper, but council kind of changed that policy the last time we bought a pumper and, and actually approved the purchase of a pumper that was, was paid for out of the motor pool fund. So when we go through this exercise of looking at the equipment as to what that cost should be to the fire department, we'll look at what the typical fleet is, we'll exclude the aerial lift and unless council directs otherwise, I'm going to exclude the pumper because the founding documents and the ordinance and all that basically say that it's not supposed to fund those types of things. Or I can build it in, either way it doesn't really make a difference, you know, we can do it both ways, but we'll have a better idea of what that number is. But the answer to your question is it did get increased, I think by thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars a number of years ago when we bought medic five.
Okay.
Offset that.
Thank you. Now we're up to, uh, public works. Mr. Makula, could, could you address E two standby pay versus overtime pay and...
In the steelworkers contract, we've got provisions that pay for a two E, which is somebody that is responsible for answering a phone twenty-four hours a day and in, in the, the public works, that's seven days a week. So they're responsible for being, they get paid if, if they're getting paid the two E, they have to be able to answer the phone and respond, so we've got somebody kind of on standby.
For a certain period of time?
Mm-hmm, well, for that, for that day, so outside of their work shift.
Few, few budgets ago, there was a reorganization plan with, with the deputy director and it was going to eliminate lead workers and, and E two standby pay and two departments and such, that, that never materialized?
It has in the, at the sewage plant.
It has that sewage plant.
Yeah, so, when we budgeted for that position, um, the, the intention was to create a deputy director, um, at the same time we had a vacancy at the treatment plant and we're having trouble finding qualified candidates for, that were class B certified to run the treatment plant and then found a very experienced person in Rick Moore that felt, that fit that bill and so we, we kind of combined those two job classifications into his position so that we could bring somebody in that was highly qualified and then he's assumed a lot of the water and sewer responsibilities. So, on the water side, we still pay two Es out of that department so that we've got a water operator available seven days a week throughout the year so that if we have a main break, we've got a well failure, it's not just an administrative person that, that can go and fix those things, it has to be a union person. And you have to remember with the streets, parks and the utilities, those are twenty-four seven operations that we staff essentially forty to fifty hours a week and so that's kind of our, our way of compensating to make sure we've got somebody available in an emergent purch- or, uh, situation.
I, I read in staff notes, the E coli testing?
Yep.
Is, is the apparatus for that included in this budget?
The, the additional equipment for us to do that testing actually was purchased out of our current budget, it's not in this budget and about a week and a half ago, we got notification from the state of Michigan that they approved our, our lab certification and procedures. So with the small investment that we made, we'll be able to pay, um, pay for that investment within a little less than two years and actually can become a revenue generating portion for us. Whenever, you know, the, the tribe, the city does a water main project and we have to do testing on that outside of our normal monthly testing, normally everybody runs to Lennington, that's the nearest lab, those can now be done with our, with our lab.
I take a special level of certification?
Yes.
I know, I know when Jody left and took a different position, it kind of left us high and dry for licensed operators. Have, have we taken action to make sure that we're getting people licensed and, and have backup and such since that point in time?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Rick Moore, Jody was a, a class A operator for wastewater treatment. Rick Moore is also a class A, that's the highest level you can achieve. Rick also has licenses in the water side, so that added to our abilities there. And in the water side, Bruce Banks is our lead operator, but the other two operators within that department both have gone through one, two, two certifications and the third, and the other employee is at his third. Um, all of our wastewater treatment plant operators have achieved, I, I think we have a D and two gentlemen that have their Ds and are writing their Cs this month. In fact, they just took the review stuff last week, so, so we're making sure that we've got layers of, of experience and certifications for that.
Won't get caught high and dry like that again, I hope.
Right.
Is, is, is there compensation for these different levels of certification for these individuals?
Yeah, in the, um, in the current steelworkers contract, we've got license bonuses for both the water and sewer, we also have them for mechanic certifications and for welding certifications.
Questions for Mr. Makula?
I don't think you're paying enough to the motor pool either.
Excuse me?
I don't think you're paying enough to the motor pool either.
I wasn't going to let you off the hook there.
Well, you know, and, and Ed mentioned that, um, what we need to do in the future and one of the things that we've done in the last couple of budgets is some investment in our, um, in our equipment and we've really invested in our preventative maintenance. So you'll actu- if you look at specifically in the, in the public works, you'll see that there's a trend where our, our, our maintenance costs are coming in way over budget than what, what I had been budgeting, but our repair costs are going down and the repair costs are going down at a greater amount and that's because we're, we're taking a much more proactive approach to preventative maintenance and, and it's, it's saving us on repair costs. The way that we've built the, uh, the motor pool schedule, I've talked about this before, but we've got ten plow trucks, so if we're looking at replacing those every two years, that means you're going to have a truck for twenty years. The life, life expectancy of a plow truck is, is about fifteen, sixteen years. So, you know, we're, we're, we need to do more maintenance, more preventative maintenance on those to extend the lives of them out. Our pickup trucks, um, we've got enough pickup trucks where we need to replace about one every year in order to keep those costs spread out and keep those on a, on a twelve to fourteen-year lifecycle and, um, there's a couple that, that we are investing in repairs and are trying to extend the life of those out, so, um, you know, each year that we adjust the budgets to kind of those trends, um, but we're trying to get more life out of the equipment whenever we can.
Do we have any decommissioned vehicles, vehicles that aren't used for regular service?
Uh, the only one that we currently have is, uh, is a police car.
And what are they used for?
That'll be, you can speak to that, but I, that'll be resold and then the money, uh, the revenue that comes back from that resale goes back into the motor pool fund.
Another question?
What's the capital outlay on this?
For DPW?
Yeah.
Uh, we had a employee, a long-term employee, I think he was about forty years? Thirty-nine, thirty, forty years and, and that was our welder mechanic position. So what I actually had put in, programmed into this budget was replacing some of the equipment that he's been using for forty years and that was there for ten, twenty years before he started. Our welding machine is, for an example, one of our welders has a title from the fifties, so you're talking about a seventy-year-old piece of equipment. So when we replaced that in, that, um, that position, the new employee is trained on the new equipment, not the old stuff. the new employee is trained on the new equipment, not the old stuff. The old stuff, and I, we've met with all the reps and stuff, they don't recommend using it unless you've been using it for decades. So I actually had programmed into this budget to replace a bunch of that equipment. When that employee actually got hired about a month ago, we went through and prioritized all the stuff because we had room in the current budget to purchase things, and they're kinda flip-flopped. So we've purchased two different welders and a cutting machine. And then the money that's in the capital outlay will actually be purchased to buy, you know, cutoff saw, a drill press, and some of the other equipment that'll help us with that fabrication and repair. And I think the mayor even asked a question a couple months ago about a, to the manager about a high bill that we paid to a local welding company that came in and did two pretty small jobs and it, and it cost us about three thousand dollars when we were in between. So.
That was to weld a plow and, and to do some, some other work on, on one of the gators that was used for.
Yep, and, and, you know, we, we held off on that. We, I, we actually have about twelve welding jobs right now that are kinda in queue. And we're just waiting for some final wiring and then we'll be back up and running and won't have to incur those type of.
Did hire a certified welder, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked Mr. Cozo, the part-time. I mean, other than your parks, do you, do you have part-time people?
We have currently eight part-timers in our parks department and three in the street department. One of the reasons this actually came up early in your, your conversation with the refuse, we used to pay Republic Services to pick up all of our lawn bags. And we found that by hiring two summer help, that we could, we could have that summer help spend twelve hours a week picking up those lawn bags. We saved five grand from what we were paying Republic, and then I have those two employees for three and a half days in addition. And that's part of the way that we've been able to just expand what we're doing in-house and reduce some of the contracted services. The third employee, part-time employee, is a result of the DDA switching from contracting to directly for some of their maintenance that's downtown to the Public Works. And then we, we use that revenue to, to hire one person, I think it was one person in the parks, one in the street department. And then, so we're absorbing those costs and delivering those services.
Okay, so the part-timers are the ones that do the yard waste?
Yes, most of the time, yeah.
Okay. How about year-round part-time people? Do you have any year-round part-time?
No, our only year-round is, or I'm sorry, our only part-time is generally May through August, September. It's just during the summer season.
We've never had a problem, snow plowing and stuff like that, people sick or?
No, we have not. Actually, when we were able to add the, the full-time equivalents through the bridge, when we added those last year, was the first time that we were able to staff a, kinda giving away my presentation for next Tuesday. But we were fine, we were able to do a twenty-four-seven coverage during the winter time. So we ran three shifts this winter for the first time. So we had coverage from eleven o'clock Sunday evening around the clock until eleven o'clock Friday evening. And that reduced overtime, but it also, we had eyes and, and equipment out so we could handle any of the event that, that came.
We're back up to preventive maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
You talked, at one time we talked about getting some, you were gonna get some software to keep track of that. Did that ever materialize, or how do you do it now?
Yeah, the, and, and at the time that we had put that in, it was a different mechanic that we had, we've got a new fleet mechanic. So we did purchase the module so that we could plug into the, the, into the vehicles and get the telemetry and the readouts and stuff on them. That's been extremely valuable to us. When we looked at, when he looked at the cost of purchasing a unit that would do the large trucks versus the frequency of how often we need those, he convinced me that paying a valley truck out of Traverse City to come do that, maybe once a year, maybe twice a year, was worthwhile not to spend that, make that expense. So we did not purchase that, so that money stayed in the motor pool. The software that we had talked about for our record-keeping, he actually brought in forms that he had used in his previous employment. And so we created some, some forms and we've got a file system for that. And he felt that his time spent sitting at the computer and typing all that in was better spent in the mechanic bay wrenching. So, you know, we made those decisions after a lot of discussion and thought on it.
I had that thought when it was first discussed, you know, going to a computerized system is not exactly a dictation system. Someone still has to put the data in.
Mm-hmm.
You either touch a keyboard or you touch a pen and write it. You know, the important thing is that you have a record of what maintenance was performed and when it was done. So you have something to look at.
Yep, and I, I'm very, very pleased with the system that he's got. I actually had expected our administrative assistant would do a lot of that data entry. But like Ed alluded to, she's spending a lot more time tracking the overtime and all the different classifications that we're doing. But also where the street money is being spent and where the refuse money is being spent. We're better allocating how much time and, and what time is, is going to the state for truck line maintenance and the thirty-one bridge. So that, that ate up a lot of that capacity I had planned to use. So we just, you just adjust to things as they come.
Any further questions or comments? Parks, anything on parks? Hold on, seventy-four. Spicer Group, huh?
So this is one change, Mayor, in the budget. With the new state chart of accounts, they didn't really give you the flexibility of having a separate account for your, for your engineer or your attorney. So we decided to combine them because those are really one or two line items for a department. We just added those line items to the general operating budget. So that's, that's why that's. There's a couple things to point out in this particular budget. Ted, do you wanna speak to the attorney fees?
Yes, he had not had, that firm had not had any increase, and I, I can't recall how many years. And he's been discounting his fees, and so we did afford him an increase in his annual fee. It'd been, I think it was eight or ten years, Ed? Eight or ten years, he hadn't had any, any increase.
We just added him as prosecutor.
Correct.
And I thought he said that would be little or no additional workload to do that. What fee was that?
So the prosecuting attorney on this line item here, we used to pay the county prosecutor, we had a contract with them. The city attorney is gonna be doing that on a fee-for-service basis. And based on the trends right now, we see that, you know, we only budgeted eight thousand for this year, which is a reduction from previous budgets, what we've paid. I think we'll see some savings there in that particular. The other, the other change in this budget is the computer hardware and software went from fourteen-five to twenty-five-five. That ten thousand dollars, and it's a placeholder because I don't have estimates yet from the vendor, but the brains in here that run all of this technology is starting to fail. It's the thirteen-year-old piece of equipment. That's been the root cause of some of the issues we've had. So we're gonna get an estimate to replace that.
As our, as our look at the attorney going, I would not be in favor of increasing that five thousand dollars.
Well, why did it go down in the previous years? It was at fifty-five.
That was the actual amount we spent, that wasn't a budgeted amount. And his retainer, plus, you know, there are some other things he charges us for above and beyond. We've broken out some of that now in the attorney litigation projects account. But there's also, you know, sometimes there's additional things in here. His retainer amount is what he's referring to, is the thing that hasn't gone up.
So what is exactly, does this fee cover? Just a retainer, just to have?
Almost everything that he does day for day for us, whether it's reviewing contracts, attending the staff meeting, writing leases, reviewing proposed, you know, construction contracts, making sure the language is in there. All the day-to-day stuff that you, you know, you need legal advice on.
Occasionally, I see a bill from him for, is it other services that?
Well, we've got, you know, if we have a litigation, if there's something that we're being sued for, then that, that's separate, that's not covered under the retainer. So sometimes you'll see that. Obviously, you've got the prosecuting attorney, we have a tax appeal attorney, George doesn't handle that, it's the same firm, but it's Andrea from the Grand Rapids office, there's a line item for that in here. Then our labor attorney, John Gretzinger.
Is different.
Is a different attorney.
But if he prosecutes on behalf of us for ordinances and such, that's on a fee schedule, that's, I mean, individual fee.
On the, on the criminal, the criminal stuff, stuff that the prosecutor used to handle?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, in addition to all the services that, that Ed described, you know, a lot of it is emails, communications with department heads, answering questions with councils that reach out to them. It's, it's a number of things that, that are covered.
People favor a five thousand increase, so, or not?
I'm not moved to change it, but.
I'd keep it how it is, the fifty-five. I don't wanna change it.
What's that?
I don't wanna change it, I'd keep it at the fifty-five.
Keep, keep it at the budgeted fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Morodtyn, anything you wanna say?
Yeah, we got it. No, we're not requesting any changes, but we, there is a lot we do do for our fees. We tend, similar to what attorney does, we're involved in staff meetings, we tend council meetings, we do site plan reviews. We're involved with putting together project estimates, we do a lot of small projects. So, for example, like the marina, we put together the bid package and the plans for that, you know, a month ago, a couple weeks ago. That was all done under these services. So there's, and then, of course, we have our special projects that we work on, the project that's completely different. So this is kind of the general support, asking, answering a lot of questions and supporting the city as needed, so.
Also, just recently, Sean initiated a, what was supposed to be a weekly luncheon meeting with Jeff and Ed and I to discuss the process of various projects throughout the year, primarily the USDA and some other projects. So he's added to his workload.
And grant writing, that's, we help a lot with grant assistance and trying to chase down other sources of funding, so.
If I may, I'd like to back up to attorney real quick. Is, was that amount requested by sailor's office, or was that staff? He requested that, and I concurred with his recommendation for an increase. Well, I'm gonna probably take, did we, did we decide to keep it in or take it out?
At fifty-five, at budgeted.
Okay. Okay, I'm happy.
Mr. Bradford, the computer hardware, software, what's that?
So ten thousand of that is approximately, because I don't have a firm estimate that is gonna be to replace the equipment in here. And then I always have a line item in there for various things that tend to break, whether it's a switch or a router, or we have a server that goes down, or our wireless access points or whatever, there's always things that need to be repaired or replaced. I can go see if there's anything else specific in there.
Okay, debt service, we made some changes in the way we recorded debt service this year.
Right, so as, as we've talked about several places here, if you look at the two thousand and ten capital improvement bond and the two thousand and ten capital improvement interest, basically, those get paid out of a number of different places. The money was coming into the general fund because it was a general obligation bond. Normally, you would have a debt service fund, that's not a required fund by generally accepted accounting principles, so we, several years ago, opted to move that into the general fund. Then it would pay the debt out of here. However, when you're looking at it from the water and sewers perspective, which pays a good portion of that debt, it, it's a little bit confusing because it has to show as a transfer out, when really it's debt service. Both ways are correct, there's not, it's not that it's wrong. We just felt that, particularly for purposes of rural development and for clarity, if we pay that portion of that bond, even though it's not the full amount in there because other funds pay it as well, it'll show up as debt service and it gives a clearer picture as to what the water and sewer fund's actually paying. So it's more for clarity than anything else.
We've been through the appropriations and the things. Enterprise funds. Those budget increases the, gives us the three and a half percent increase on page eighty-two. We're showing a negative value on page eighty-three.
This number right here?
Yeah, the total water and sewer is sixty-five thousand nine oh five.
Negative.
Which?
That's not particularly concerning to me. You know, the water and sewer fund budget fluctuates a lot depending on repairs, maintenance, capital projects, and that sort of thing. We have ample fund balance. There's also a lot of uncertainty in timing of certain projects, so there is a fair number of assumptions built in here. If you look at the capital outlay over five million and debt service numbers, those are dependent on when we close on the rural development loan, when some of these projects phase in and that sort of stuff. The number that we need to be concerned about, in my estimation, is this number here.
That has my attention.
That is not, that is not a funding issue per se, it's a cash flow issue. And the reason it's a cash flow issue has to do with the timing of when our other debt falls off and when our new bonds come in. I don't believe at this point it's something that's, that's unmanageable, and I'll give you an example of why. We got a four hundred thousand dollar tap fee from Filer Township. My intention is to set that aside to help cover some of this cash shortage, so it not to be used. Jeff and I have had conversations about delaying some capital projects, again, to help, and maybe even some repairs and maintenance to fill this bubble. We did not have time to flush that out, nor would it have been a productive effort in this twenty nineteen, twenty twenty projected because the timing and the magnitude, frankly, is, is a big thing, of the rural development loans is gonna have a huge impact on these numbers. We've given it our best estimates. Every day that Sean's crew can go forward with figuring out what those costs are gonna be for the second phase of that project, this number will tighten up. But make no doubt about it, this, this is a number that I am concerned about, but that we will be able to address. And we'll, you know, if, if we have to have a plan and we have to change something or delay something, that'll come back to council, obviously. But it, it, it needed to show here so that everybody was aware that, yes, we may have a cash flow issue, but it's, at this point, I don't think it's unmanageable. If Sean comes back and says that the, the project is gonna be at the high end of the scale and we have some other stuff that breaks, then we're gonna have to think about doing some things on an interim basis to just get through that hump. But overall, we're on a good path with the waters.
Mr. Taylor, when we get done here tonight, I got a email from Senator Boer concerning our water and sewer. So I wanna share that with you. All the things happening there certainly a concern, the closing out number eighteen and what it's gonna cost. I can appreciate, it, it takes a long time for DEQ to respond to us, and, and when they respond, that they express their concern that we may not be able to meet the timeline. And the reason is because we've been waiting four months for them to give us an answer, that's kinda interesting.
Are we on schedule? I ask you that question every time I get an opportunity. We're meeting our deadlines. I know, but DEQ isn't, but are we still on schedule?
I know, but DEQ isn't, but are we still on schedule?
Yes. And I've already-
Mine is June thirtieth.
I've already had a discussion with Representative Vanderwall, just to give him the background on this. And, um, we may have to ask him to intervene at some point in the future, but we're holding off, uh, with that right now.
Um, we, we get on ninety-one water operations. Big surge in meter buy from seventeen to eighteen. And we didn't, we're talking going to be about twenty thousand dollars short of, of what we budgeted, but then we're going to jump up again at eighteen, nineteen. How many meters are we replacing? Don't we have a plan to replace a certain percentage of those every year because of where and...
Yeah, I believe that we're, we're on target to replace about eighty meters a year in the system. The, uh, a couple of things that happened, um, four or five years ago, it became pretty evident to me that there were a lot of large meters in our system that were very old. So we went through and systematically replaced a lot of our large consumers and upgraded those meters. Those obviously have a, uh, between a one and three year payback on them. Last year, we anticipate, I put more money in that line item because of all the development discussions that were happening. And, uh, you know, one project can, can create a twenty, easily a twenty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar meter purchase for us. So we were trying to anticipate that. There's, a lot of those projects didn't happen, so I've reduced that down a little bit this year.
We haven't been discovering more un-metered connections, have we?
Uh, we have not, not in several years. And one of the things that, I just want to clarify, when a new development happens, they pay a system development charge and pay for the meter purchase. So that always shows up on the revenue side, but if I've got to spend an extra twenty thousand dollars in meters, that comes out of my operating budget. And, and I'm required by the city manager to fill that hole from someplace within my budget. So we were just trying to anticipate, anticipate that. Um, we always get reimbursed and, and actually are making money on developments, primarily through the system development charges as soon as they hook up, uh, but we're just trying to anticipate those.
Questions? Thank you. Page one hundred. I'm taking, taking the, the, the big increase there, two thousand twenty, twenty-one era is, is the, uh, the big bond to correct the, uh, outflow.
Corrective action plan implementation.
We don't have a whole lot of this left. Would you, would you, would you like to take a five minute break real quick?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Let's take five, please, please come back quickly. Okay, we'll begin again? I'm up to the, uh, page one oh two, municipal marina. The, um, Mr. Murat, do you have anything as far as an update on, on damage assessment, what we're looking at, or, or Chief Kozel?
So after the SESH event, uh, we, actually during the SESH event, we contacted the insurance company to alert them of what was happening. It was new to them, so they had to do some research over the weekend. Um, on Monday, we had engineers from the state of Michigan, from MDOT, come up. They did inspections on the thirty-one bridge. They also did inspections on our Maple Street Bridge. Engineers from Spicer came up, evaluated the entire riverwalk, noted any, uh, concerns, issues, defects, damage. Uh, we also, they also took pictures of some of the private damage. And then, um, some of the stuff at the marinas is pretty obvious. The mar, the, uh, riverwalk with a few minor repairs has been completed, um, and obviously opened back up last week. And they're still doing some evaluation on the marina docks, but at least a third to a half, uh, or, would you say more? Are compromised and unsafe, will have to be replaced. Uh, we had a conference call with the insurance company Monday, I believe, and they confirmed that, uh, that the damage caused by that event is covered. So, uh, they've asked us to compile all of the engineers' recommendations, reports and estimates, uh, but all of that will be covered by the insurance. Um, we also have the electricians going over all the electrical systems at the marina, riverwalk and anything else that might have been compromised. So we're kind of waiting for all those reports to come back in.
When you participate, start putting it back together.
Once the check has been cut and cashed. Well, I, Thad and I have had some conversations along with Tim that this could create an opportunity if, if a substantial amount of those docks are damaged and can be reimbursed. We may want to consider using that as match money, um, towards trying to replace the rest of them. There's some grant money available. We've always been lacking on the, on the match side of it, but maybe this creates an opportunity. So we'll have some decisions once we get the engineers' reports.
Jeff, is it fair to say that we anticipate the docks that we will be replacing, whether that's some or all of them will be of a design that we won't have to worry about fluctuating water levels?
Uh, that would be, that would be my, my push, yeah. So if we got to replace them, we'll try to replace them with something that's easier to adjust and, and accommodate the, the lake levels.
Like that Arthur Street fishing area, that floats up and down, doesn't it?
Well, there's some systems, we've, that, we've looked at, in my previous career, I've looked at that marina and what options were available. Um, a lot of, most of the municipal marinas are going to floating systems right now, but most of those are in static water, lake bodies, where you don't have the, the dynamics of a river. The concern would be if you've got a log that's coming down that river, which happens quite often, or ice jams, uh, there could, there's a lot of things that could really damage those docks if they're floaters. Um, there are some fixed adjustable systems that are out there, and I would think we would look at, into something like that, where they're fixed but, but adjustable.
Okay. Uh, Chief, any particular changes in cost factors or anything for the marina this year?
I think the only thing that you're going to notice is just, uh, the uptick in the fuel costs and fuel usage. Um, we upticked just a little bit on wages, but that's about it, nothing, uh...
Hopefully, we filled up before the prices went up here.
The tanks are full right now.
Okay. I wish mine was, uh, but back when it was two fifty-three instead of two ninety, but, okay. Some of the same crew coming back this year?
It looks like we have three returning and Laura, so we have four. We do have some apps in. We're sort of waiting for everything to be done first before we hire. I don't want to get cart before the horse on that.
I see, Mr. Bradford, I see some red numbers down on, uh, page one oh six. Any glaring concerns here?
Um, yeah, I mean, the marina, obviously, as, as we've talked about for a number of years, is very tight on cash. A lot of it's going to depend on boating traffic. A lot of it's going to depend on fuel prices. Obviously, if we can't open as scheduled, then this number's going to look a lot different and there will be some concerns. Tim is going to do what he can do to control costs, um, and we'll have to see where that works out. But there's, um, a possibility, if not a probability, that if we can't open for a full season, we may have a little bit of additional trouble meeting our debt service. Um, we'll have fewer costs and we'll have to see where those numbers shake out and, and where we monitor them. But, um, that could potentially, I'm not saying it will, but it could potentially require maybe a little bit more assistance this year. But if we can control costs and get the docks fixed and get the marina back open, um, then maybe we, we end up being all that anyway. Because the, the amount of money that we send over to the marina to pay for, you know, pretty much is a one-to-one match with the debt service. So the operational costs themselves kind of fluctuate depending on staffing and things. We'll just have to see how that kind of shakes out.
Boat much? Any questions on a boat much? No red number there, or projected, something. Is that with the repairs that were done this year?
Yeah, that was the Arthur Street repairs caused that.
We've already done the Ramsdale. One thirteen, oil and gas. I made a proposal early on that we take an additional two hundred thousand dollars out of the oil and gas fund this year to apply to street repair. And I would continue to make that proposal. We had an oil and gas meeting. Different thought processes, processes in that, um, endowment, uh, loss of potential earnings, two hundred thousand dollars in relationship to ten million dollars of fund. Is this something we're going to do every year? The, uh, Mr. McCullough, is the, uh, asphalt rates and stuff like that, they're, they're pretty favorable at this time, are they not?
The, uh, the contract that we awarded this spring has the asphalt prices probably about as low as they've been in ten years. Now, the oil markets change, but right now, they're pretty good.
We're making, making some progress on adding to with the additional money that, that council allocated for the current fiscal year?
Yep, we have a draft change order prepared. Uh, we've met with the contractor. We plan on bringing that before council, um, either next week or the following meeting, uh, once we get concurrence from the contractor. But that's reinvesting all those real estate earnings.
If you had another two hundred thousand dollars for actual road repair for, uh, for this next fiscal year, uh, could you make good use of it?
We wouldn't be able to do it the way that we're spending the real estate money. Uh, the real estate money, what our plan is, is to take candidates that are in the transportation improvement plan, move them forward. So instead of next year or the year after, bring them into this year. There's no more candidates left in that plan for that money. So, uh, we would have to look for that next project. Certainly, we could find that, um, and then, but that would be a different type of construction, I would anticipate. And we would have to do another bidding process and award. Um, the money probably wouldn't be spent until, I don't know if we'd have to end this fall, you think, or it would be spring? Probably, it would probably be a, a spring of nineteen construction. And then, at that point, I would add it into one of the other projects that we had anticipated for the spring of nineteen and just expand that.
Okay. But it would help move us forward?
Uh, every dollar helps.
Okay.
Well, there were four council members at that meeting. I was one of them. Um, and, you know, you listen to the, you listen to their, um, uh, their rationale about not taking two hundred thousand dollars out and, uh, look at their projections and listen to, and I, um, the lack of earnings that the fund would have going forward. And of course, I think the concern is, geez, you know, to me, it's like credit card. I think I've said that. It's like a credit card. We've got to stop utilizing it. I mean, if we really want this to be reduced, at some time, we have to stop putting, and depending on that money, that's the interest money that's coming off, um, the oil and gas fund. And if we deplete, depleted, take the principal down or, or take, take away two hundred thousand was, and I'm, I feel like I'm paraphrasing what they said. So, um, we're losing that earning potential to offset these items that we have on, on capital improvement. So I'm really torn, although I still would want to take some more money because streets is still a big thing, a big issue with all of us. Um, and I was wondering if, um, council would be more willing, well, and maybe most of you are overwhelmingly willing to take two hundred thousand out, but I was thinking a hundred thousand. And my rationale behind that is I just can't possibly foresee us not selling any more real estate so that there would be more real estate funds to add to that over the next year.
Another, uh, new development is the state did push forward a hundred and seventy-five million dollars that they accelerated and we, we received that money and, um, we administratively decided to put that all into the local streets.
That's only fifty-three thousand dollars, so it...
Excuse me?
It's only, it's like, right, fifty-three thousand dollars is what we're getting.
Um, yeah, I, I don't remember. It was right around fifty thousand, somewhere in there. So we've put that into the local street fund, so that, that will help that fund as well.
But putting something into, into local street or major street fund is a whole lot different than repairing streets because that fund is paying for street sweeping and, uh, winter maintenance and a lot of other things.
Right, but the idea is that that fifty thousand would be construction or milling fills or whatever.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be willing, you know, um, when we talk about capital improvement fund and what's been done in the past, the, uh, I mean, it served a lot of different purposes. It, it, it supported utility rates, uh, water and sewer rates for a period of time. It, it, it's done some other things along, on those lines. When I asked that we move the service pistols to, to a different category instead of the, uh, oil and gas fund for the, uh, capital improvement money. Capital improvement, to me, it, it, some of the things that were done in the past are certainly capital improvements. I would like to see the capital improvement fund similar to what we've done with the surplus property, sales in the future. I would like to see the capital improvement pretty much dedicated to streets until we, uh, reach a point where we can make enough money available to make progress, not just maintain, uh, the sixty percent poor, uh, local streets that we have, but actually make, make some progress on that. As debt service falls off, there's more money available to, to do that, uh, particular item. You know, I, I know what people's concerns are. I would say that I wouldn't, I wouldn't in the future support taking any, anything out of the, uh, capital improvement fund, uh, except the existing debt service and, uh, and street repair. But I still want to take two hundred thousand dollars extra out this year to kind of kickstart it just a little bit.
I would have to...
I'll just suggest, under that proposal, then, what, what, um, resources would the city have for other capital projects? If, if, if I heard you right, I thought you were suggesting out of the oil and gas fund, it would just be for the current debt service and streets?
I would think, I would think we'd need to start setting money aside, you know, and it's kind of like, Luddington a few years ago recognized the need to redo the restrooms for, for, for their beach facility. They, they put money aside for three years so they had the money to take care of that. Um, and I think, you know, planning goes, when, when they first started doing capital projects with this fund, they funded the projects. So, you know, it wasn't until they got... they funded the projects. You know, it wasn't until they got further into it that it became a leverage fund, long-term leverage fund, that took, took future council's ability to, to use that other than to pay the existing debt. You know, we, we need to do something with the infrastructure. We need to look at, at other options. I'm, I'm not a big proponent of, of, of adding a millage. I mean, we let, certainly let the voters decide, but the feedback I'm getting would, would be that, that most of them would probably decide against the dedicated millage. One of the issues I have with dedicated millage is that once, once you pass something like that, people have a tendency to look at it and say, we've got four hundred thousand dollars of dedicated village for streets. Now we can spend the money we've been spending on streets somewhere else. That, that's a concern to me, and that, that generally turns out to be the, the way it works, you know, it just kind of slides year over year.
I think we had an issue too, when I was on the Anha Committee, of, of, we couldn't really write a proposal to put on the ballot that would just say that it was dedicated to local streets. And, and that was a, a bit of a concern too, which is why I really struggled with the language that they came up with because it was still meant that it still had to go through probably the general fund and then, then go, and then maybe be split up between local and, and major, and then again, offsetting some of those other costs that aren't really exactly street repair, but more maintenance of the streets. So there were some issues with the language that you could use on the ballot for that anyway. That I would be not in favor of putting anything on the ballot for it.
I can't, you know, I, I mean, this council can't obligate what, what's going to happen to the capital improvement fund in the future anyhow. We can this year, but certainly whatever council is seated next year, looking at the budget, would have those resources available. I, I would just, just say, should, should I be re-elected and still on the council next year? The, I wouldn't be looking to take any more money out of the capital improvement fund other than a boost this year to get things moving and give us an opportunity to look at where we can find some other resources.
I would have to agree with Beaton about the hundred. I was going to suggest that as well. Instead of having the two hundred thousand taken out of the oil and gas to, to split that in half. That is a lot to think about. The one hundred thousand is not as bad, I don't think, and it would still help.
Okay. Market can change, two or three hundred thousand dollars a day, so.
Perhaps, you know, I wanted to offer another option is if, you know, we, may, I don't know that this decision has to be made right now. In our staff meeting this morning, we were talking about how aggressive the city has been with street repairs, and we've exhausted a lot of the, the current candidates, and we keep pulling them from years out and years in. It may be beneficial for council to have staff give, and I, give you an idea of what, what we would realize in terms of street repairs if we did a hundred thousand, what we would do with two hundred thousand, and then see how you feel about that at that point. Because I don't, right now, I don't know how much we could get done with a hundred thousand more. And that's my only concern.
That would be my concern also, is it wouldn't be enough to really have an impact. Two hundred is going to get you a, a reconstruct on a, on a street segment. I mean, it's going, going to be able to get some, some pretty good maintenance done. Is that not right, Jeff?
Yeah, the easiest, the easiest example I can give you is the section of 12th Street between Oak and Maple that we just built last summer. That's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for one block of major streets.
That's a reconstruct, right?
That was a full reconstruct, yep. So if you went to a local street, obviously, you don't have necessarily the curb and gutter in the, in the width of it. So a hundred thousand is probably going to get you about a block of reconstruct. And what we were talking about today is that we've been doing a lot of milling fills, trying to stretch those dollars out as far as we can. Once we get, once we exhaust the list of milling fills, then we're into reconstruction. And so we're getting close to that now. We're getting close to, a lot of the streets that are left, especially the ones that are in the worst shape, need to be reconstructed.
I want to deal with a worse-shaped street, not, not extend a street that's, that's already in fair to good condition. We've got sixty percent poor out there, and they're not getting better.
Well, and that's correct, but to follow the asset management guidelines, we need to do the program that we're doing now. And then, and as we're reaching the point that we're, we are approaching, then we can start getting into the reconstructions. And the reconstructions will also be done when we have the utility work, and so we start matching the money below, you know, below those streets. So we're getting close to that point where, where you're going to see full reconstructions with utilities.
Surely, surely we've got some local streets that don't have utility work on the schedule also.
I'm sure there is for reconstruct, yeah. And then one other point that I want to make, and, I mean, I, we, we enjoy fixing these streets, but there's also demand on that capital improvement fund for other capital projects, such as improvements in the parks, improvements in our buildings. I know the fire station has projects that have been kind of in queue and waiting. There's projects, you know, our, our DPW building is over fifty years old. There's the electrical system that needs to be replaced. There's a lot of, we'll be coming forward in the next, at the next meeting, well, probably in, in next month, with a, a potential grant application to replace the tennis courts at Sands Park. But that requires matching money, and typically, those matching funds have come out of that capital improvement fund. So I, I'm not disagreeing with, with how to spend that on streets, but there's just also other demands that we should keep in mind.
Well, there's just never enough money. That's the bottom line. I don't know, what does, what do those other council members feel about this?
I would go with two hundred thousand, to get a good start on.
I can play the devil's advocate. Two hundred thousand dollars covers one year. What do we do the next year? And what do we do from the years after that? That's a short-term plan. I don't hear a long-term plan. I'm not going one side or the other. I see both sides of the issue. I know how they've used that fund in the past, our, what we could spend out of that, that money. Setting out in the council chambers, not really agreeing with how they spend it, but it wasn't my choice. It looks like we're going, we're out to about twenty twenty-seven before we're pretty clear in obligation right now?
Yeah, that's, I mean, more or less, if you look at the, the way the current obligations are structured, I mean, the Marina is the wild card there. It could require more or less, depending on how it performs. But generally, you've got the Ramsdale note, and you've got the First Street reconstruction bond portion that's being paid out of there already.
I also noticed at the meeting that there were those that didn't seem to bother two hundred thousand, and it was those that it did. So they were even split in there at the Gas and Oil Board. They weren't. They, they were kind of struggling with it also, yes and no, so. One, one thing that was consistent was nobody felt that it should be along, done year after year after year. That was one thing that I did hear.
I may just make one comment on that. When, when, what money was taken from the oil and gas fund for water and sewer, that's required by bond covenants if the water and sewer fund gets into difficulty. And there was what I would consider a crisis with the Oaks flows dramatically decreasing. So that, that requirement kind of trumps everything else because of our bond covenants. But a few years after that, council took an additional, I think it was a half percent, eighty-seven thousand five hundred with the idea that, yep, we're going to use that to do streets, and we're going to kickstart that, and we won't do that again. Now here we're three years later, and we're doing it again, and I don't know what's to prevent other councils down the road from doing it again. And I've heard a lot of talk about, you know, we want to manage things across the city, wherever it is, in a sustainable way. And I think you heard our investment advisor at the oil and gas board, and you heard your finance director at the oil and gas board, and you heard three of the five members at the oil and gas board say, exceeding the spending rule is not a recommended best practice, nor is it necessarily sustainable. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that if you take two hundred thousand dollars out of the fund in addition to the four percent, that you're going to bankrupt the fund or anything like that. But I'm saying you will reduce your purchasing power over time, and that compounding effect will reduce it even more over time. But it's council's decision to decide what they want to do.
Is there a way to calculate that out?
Yeah, you can, you can run projections on that. I mean, two hundred thousand dollars out of four percent spending rule is eight thousand dollars a year to start, and if you assume a compounded rate of return, it, it grows, you know, over long periods of time. But that's, but, you know, my position's been pretty clear on that from the start, but, but this is a council policy decision.
Do we want to see what the city can tell us between the hundred and the two hundred thousand?
I would like to see something.
Yeah, good idea.
I mean, here, here we got ten, ten, little over, about ten point two million dollars of money sitting there. And, yeah, we're going to grow a nest egg.
For who?
Yes, that's, that, you know, that's, that's a pretty good question. I think, you know, we're not going to cripple it by taking two hundred thousand dollars out of there this year and, and applying it to streets. I don't know when we'd be able to come up with some money and do something for streets as beneficial with the prices as well as they are right now, as favorable. You know, investments go up, cost goes up. The, our staff cost went up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And that's only a six point two million dollar budget, so. I, I, you know, I think it's an opportunity. I get questions about, when are we going to spend some of this money? When are we going to do this? And I, I understand the investment into things. The, I've done that before. I understand the, the real growth. But then the question that I've asked before, what, do we want twelve million? Do we want fifteen million? Do we want twenty million? What, what do we want this fund to be, and who for?
This is a dumb question, but we're talking about being out of debt by twenty twenty-seven. How much in total debt between now and then is that in dollars? I mean, if we were just to pay everything off, it would be more than ten million dollars, right?
No, I mean, on the Ramsdale Theater HVAC note, you've got maybe nine, that's about a million dollars. First Street bond, you've got six hundred and thirty thousand roughly, so that's, you know, some of that's interest though, too, so the principal's going to be a little less than that. But it'd be, it'd be a num, a few million dollars, you know, including the Marina support, probably, roughly. But if you were to take that out of the principal, then, then, then you really need, you probably would be required to not invest this like a pension fund anymore, because now you really are violating the, the, as I mentioned in the oil and gas board meeting, and I'll just repeat it briefly again for, for all of council. We're, we have two kind of bedrock things that we're trying to manage here and trying to balance. One is the charter prohibition on invading principal. That's, that's in charter. We can't invade the accumulated royalties. The other thing is the new state law that says we can invest this fund like, like in a, a pension fund. We can invest it in assets that fluctuate in value. Before, we never invested it in assets that fluctuated in value. So if we drained every last penny out of this fund above the protected royalty amount, and the market now drops thirty percent, now we've invaded the principal. And so what the spending rule does, which is between the charter prohibition and the, the way we can invest the fund, is it balances those two. And that's why you manage it as an endowment. So is two hundred thousand dollars, as the mayor is suggesting, is that going to impact the purchasing power of the fund? Yes. Could it set a precedent down the road for future councils? I believe it could. Will it help to pave local streets? Absolutely. Are asphalt prices good? Yes, they are. But if you start talking, taking more and more money out to do other things that aren't an investment, now you've really compromised the, that balance, that spending policy, and that, that becomes very problematic in my view.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion that Aaron had. Let's see what it looks like at a hundred and two hundred. I mean, I thi, I think it'd be worthy to, to know that. Obviously, it's going to be better at two hundred, but let's see what we can do.
I would, I would like to see two hundred. Anyone else? There?
Hundred. I stay at a hundred, that's all I.
Seems like ten million dollars is always the goal, and we're over that. And it is raining, and I was also saying it ain't fun. I just don't know if two hundred is too aggressive. I don't think, I don't think, but I don't think a hundred's aggressive enough.
I, I would, I would say if we're not going to do a hundred, forget it, and stick with the four percent rule, so.
Well, if we try to go, keep with the ten million, if we go over, if we do the two hundred, then we dip below the ten.
Can I speak to that just briefly? The ten million dollars has never been a goal that city council has adopted. It's never been a goal.
Right, but it's always been, that's been, always been set.
It's been a milestone. It hasn't been.
It, it has, though, you know.
Well, it, it was, it was, it was nice when we hit ten million. We hit ten million a number of years back. It dropped below that. It's gone back and over. It's fluctuated. But I just want to talk about how this works a little bit. So ten million is not a goal that the oil and gas board has set because that's not how you manage endowments, nor is it any guidance that council has set because they've not weighed in on that particular thing. When you have an endowment that you're growing at a, at a, an estimated rate of return, and you're taking out a suspendable or a sustainable spending amount, you're not only going to protect the purchasing power of that fund, but it's also going to grow that fund because, of course, there's inflation. So that fund is always going to grow a little bit because you have to preserve the purchasing power. So to say, we're going to cap this fund at ten million regardless, and take out more than that and keep it at ten million, you're not going to keep up with your purchasing power over time. That's what the spending.
Well, and I, I know that, but.
Right.
As a common wording, the goal was a ten million dollars, you know?
I respectfully disagree with that because, well, I mean, ten million was a nice threshold.
We're not going to argue. I mean, I don't want to argue, but I just, this is my opinion, and you have your opinion. And I appreciate how much you love this, that you're this, because I do, and there's no disrespect. Honest to God.
I, I, and no disrespect, and I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying, to my knowledge, there's never been a goal set for ten million because you wouldn't set a goal like that for an endowment type fund. That's all.
Well, my decision's going to be based on every action, there's a reaction, and I would like to see those numbers, and I would like to see what kind of reaction that portfolio's going to take with taking out two hundred thousand dollars. I get, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I don't have a lot of investments. I don't know how it works. I don't know what impact it has.
Yeah, that, that's probably what we need to look at too, the impact of taking the hundred versus the two hundred out of oil and gas. And look at that as well as look at the street projects.
I'm not against taking out the two hundred. I just want to know what impact that's going to have before I make a final decision. And I'm not sure that's a decision we have to make tonight, is it?
Well, Chip, did you actually get to finish what you were, what you decided, if you're going to do two hundred or the hundred?
I understood. I mean, two hundred, that feels a little aggressive, over aggressive. Hundred's not aggressive enough. So, yes, I, I kind of, going back to you, I want, you know, tell me, tell me what we can get done, you know, for the moment.
And I, I'll, I'm going to say this too, that there's a lot of pressure to be put on for streets. And I know there's some opposition to asking for a millage, but I think that that's one way to really find out what the people think and what their priorities are. I also know that it does work. It worked in areas that I've been in. You know, they started out with a small millage for streets, and now they're, they're getting tripled at a moment because they showed, and they exercised good financial, they, they put it where they said they were going to do, and they were able to show that. And the city continued to match that fund. They didn't reduce their, their. to match that fund. They didn't reduce their their funding. So it it can work. It has worked in other areas. Now, whether or not the voters want it or not, I don't know. But, you know, you hear from a certain segment of people who are, I wouldn't do that. There is that silent majority out there that don't speak up. You don't know what they want. And that's one way to find out what everybody thinks. That's just my opinion.
I think you're still going to struggle because we we talked about this at great length at at the ad hoc committee with with the language that's going to be on the ballot for something like that. And that that's a concern.
Well, we have a lot of templates out there. It's it's been done in other areas. It's nothing, nothing new. It can be done. It's being done in clear right now.
We still have another work session, right?
We have nothing scheduled right now. If we need to schedule one, we can.
Because we still have a closed session to go to.
Right. Okay, just just for, just for, just a couple minutes for discussion, DDA budget. Jim, did you find that information helpful with the with the balance sheet? Did that satisfy you that they had some money?
No, what now?
DDA. The email that was sent out that has the, that had the balance sheet on it for the DDA. Did you find that helpful? To answer your question that you had.
I've seen it, I've seen it before.
Oh, we haven't seen it in a while.
A balance sheet, you know, it's kind of like a fund balance that the city has. The they have a bond payment due a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars before they get their next tax revenue in. You need to have some money in the bank to make that payment when it comes due.
I don't have an issue with that. I'm just wondering if what we can do about the stalemate that we're in, or it seemed like we were in, over the fact that we had asked them to contribute more towards city services. And they did not put any additional money in their budget for that, for this year.
Okay.
So.
Let me, let me tell you how this works. Thirty-eight percent of the tax revenue from the downtown district goes to the city, about a hundred thousand dollars from the baseline that was set.
In nineteen eighty-five.
Sixty-two percent goes to the DDA. In addition, the DDA gets about a hundred and two thousand dollars.
I know all this, Jim.
In county captured taxes.
I do understand all this, Jim.
Okay. So out of the hundred and sixty thousand dollars they get from the city taxes, they pay a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for the bond. They pay eighteen thousand dollars for landscaping. They pay twenty-two thousand dollars for city services. That's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of income.
And we have the county also contributing to this. So I don't see any reason why there can't be some money taken out to help offset services to the city. That that's just my opinion.
Well, I tell you what, when I see numbers that show forty thousand dollars to main two, two restrooms, I think, you know, there's certainly some, there's certainly some, some issues with that number.
All right. So then when are we going to have on our agenda when we have to approve or not approve this budget for the DDA if they're not going to make any moves on it?
So the budget calendar, which I think has slipped, but it was proposing that council have that in front of them at the next meeting. If we need to do another work session, we can schedule a special meeting for the second Tuesday when we would normally have a work session. It has to be adopted by the fifteenth. And that would be, at the same time we adopt the city budget, would be the, there'd be an item for the.
But it would be two separate motions, one for the DDA budget.
No, hasn't been in the past.
Has it?
Yes. By ordinance, we do have to approve the DDA budget or not approve it.
We've had extensive discussions about this because of of what the statutes say and the DDA, the city has to approve the budget and the city actually has to approve the DDA budget before the DDA can approve it. Then the DDA asked, even though the city's already approved it, the DDA has to have a public hearing and then they have to act on the budget as well. That's how it's going to play out.
I'd like to go to make a motion to go to private. Second. I'd like to make a motion to go to closed session.
I have a motion to go to closed session. I have a second.
Yes.
So for my clarification, are we scheduling another work session for next Tuesday?
Yes.
Please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Timms Lindstrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniak?
Yes.